They're not going to commit themselves to any spending.
Right.
Because the
Because, okay, he's ready.
Oh, he's ready. I got a minute, Jim.
One minute?
Jeff?
Forty-five seconds.
Jeff, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. But on the call with the two senators, they both convene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, April 15th, 2020, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All right, I'm going to call out roll for votes. Jim Davis? Jim? Jim, is he muted?
Hello, Mary.
Jim, yea or nay on approval of the agenda? Can you not hear me? Does he have us muted? All right, Mary, yea or nay on approval of the agenda?
I don't think she can hear us.
I'm giving sound through the Zoom and coming through on YouTube. I should be good now.
Wait. All right, Jim, do you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, yea or nay on approval of the agenda? Yes or no?
Yes.
Mary, yes or no?
Yes.
Rita?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, I forgot your name. I'm sorry. All right. The agenda is approved. We will begin with board reports real quick. Rita, do you have anything?
No.
Jim, do you have any board reports?
The only thing, I stopped by Leonardtown Elementary about a week and a half ago when they were having their free dinners and lunch. And I was working quite well. And I was told that they had about 400 recipients on the day before. So it appears that the free lunch and dinners that are being handed out in the four schools is working quite well.
Okay, Mary?
I just want to say thank you to everyone who has volunteered to help with preparing and handing out meals to our students and everyone in general for their gallant efforts.
Okay. I have an item really quickly. On Monday, I participated in a call with Senators Chris Van Hollen and Ben Cardin regarding the CARES Act that was recently passed and also upcoming needs of the Maryland school systems for the next round of federal funding that may come about. Under the current act that was passed, we receive, our school district will receive a little bit under $3 million in funds. Unfortunately, they don't know when that money will be released yet. So they are working diligently to get it released. I know we have plans in place in order to use that funding for additional devices for students and hotspots and things like that. We talked a little bit, and Mr. Surbiak, this is for you, apparently, about having something in the next round of some relief from the special education and IEP guidelines and, I guess, constraints slash laws that we have in place. Because what all the school systems are finding is that of any of the children that are probably suffering the most, quote unquote, are the special education students because they, we provide across the state such a wide range of services for these students. And all of that is difficult to handle on a platform or without, you know, face-to-face calls or therapy or things like that. So we've spent a lot of time on that. The second main point that we made was the digital divide. And it's really, it's a twofold issue. Number one, everyone thinks it's just, you know, a socioeconomic thing based on what your status is, but it's really more of a rural item as well. You know, out in Western Maryland, down here, even though we have people who have the means, they still don't have access to Internet. In addition to our children, they just don't have it at all. So we really made the push to have some type of broadband capabilities included in that, much like Rita, what we heard about at the NSBA conference with the FCC and putting the hotspots out in the rural areas. You know, using the different satellite bandwidths that have since been abandoned. So that was, that was the second. Also, the third point really was to have some type of, I guess, not necessarily our case, or maybe not as of yet, but a lot of the school systems are finding reduced funding from their county levels because the budgets aren't finalized yet, because everyone is starting to recognize the impact of COVID-19. So they are looking to include some type of level that, you know,
Holds harmless.
Right, in order to hold harmless whatever happens there. So that was the update. They were very open and receptive. Just, I'm going to give a shout out to our staff as well, just from what we've been hearing around the state. Number one, Charles County has apparently changed their learning platform already since they came online. Baltimore County is not providing any online services for their children K through 2. Everything they have are paper packets. So hats off to Dr. Jaffers and everyone who, you know, you know, worked so diligently to make sure our children have that online learning capability. And then, of course, Montgomery County, you know, just to show the differences in levels in funding, they handed out 43,000 computers and hotspots to their students because they had them in a warehouse, ready to go. So, you know, if there is any type of equity issue that anyone ever wants to look at, that's what, that's what they did. They handed 43,000 out in two days, I think is what Sherba had said on the call. So, and then just an aside, over across the river in Virginia, I knew Fairfax County, who, let's also keep in mind, has closed their school system over a month ahead of, you know, for the year. They just went online learning yesterday and their platforms are also not meeting their expectations. And they've had over a month to build out. So once again, the amount of time that you guys had to put everything online, which was basically two weeks, and it is up and running with a few glitches here and there, you know, hats off to that effort. So, I talked way too long. All right, Kathy?
I will just say, I was on that call as well, and Karen did an outstanding job. She is the Chair of MAB's Federal Relations Network, and so she was tasked with talking with the two senators about the fact that there's remote and rural problems with access to broadband. And I was on a call about a week and a half prior to that with MAB's Legislative Group through an online platform. And we just really talked about the challenges everyone's facing and briefly about what went through the legislature, but the question is, what will happen now with, especially the governor is appropriately tasked with not just Maryland's issues with the pandemic, but those of governors across the country, since he is the current Chair of the National Governors Association. So it is, it is a challenge going forward. We will do our best to meet. Did you want to ask?
Yeah. Nagina, do you have anything?
I do. I'm just at home, distancing and self-isolating, but I did start officially on my learning yesterday. And at least from the classes I have, so I take all APs, so all of mine is on Google classroom, so I'm not really sure how anxiety is working for our students. But I haven't had any issues yet, and I like the whole self-paced aspect of it, which I listen for everyone. So far, it's been going well for me.
All right, thank you. All right, Scott, your turn.
I'll start with a real hot, with a real highlight. I'd like to give a shout out to William Redman, care of Monica Sweeney, who provided a $1,000 donation to the school system to help out with, with food and with the work that we're doing during, during our shutdown to take care of those most, most at risk. You know, a thousand dollar donation, that really, that's just, that's just such an incredible thing to do. I think it says a lot about our community. I don't have a great deal to report. My life has been the office and Zoom meetings. And everybody needs to know that we are hard at work. We are doing everything we possibly can to provide for the greatest level of continuity of learning. We take our, we take our role very, very seriously. We have 2,161 full-time employees in all kinds of positions, and all of them are working their way through this. We have 8,063 students, which means that we have about 36,000 parents and guardians, which means that we impact 56,000 people in St. Mary's County, over half of the population. We've been out of school for 23 days. Six of those days were planned with our spring break, which means our kids have missed 18 days of classroom instruction. We're going to do everything in our power to, to make up for that deficit. We have 44 days left remaining in the school year. So if we went back to school tomorrow, we'd have 44 days. We are deeply grieved by the fact that we may not have those 44 days. Those are the most joyous, chaotic, stressful, emotional days of the year. There are plays, and there were proms, and there are all kinds of spring sports, and then culminating at the end, performances and promotions and our graduations, our commencements. These are, these are the things, these are the reasons why we, why we do what we do, why teachers do what they do, why administrators and counselors and pupil personnel, we are all in this to, to share with kids the end, culminating end of a year. So this is a real, this has been a real hardship, and I know it's been a real hardship for parents. So I deeply appreciate the patience that they're, that they're showing. And I hope a deep, a deeper understanding of the role that education plays in everyone's daily lives and how important it is that our kids have seven and a half hours every single day, 100, well, 180 days a year to go to, to go to school. I wish I could give you an announcement on what's going to happen on Monday, April 27th, when we are slated to reopen schools. Nobody believes for one moment that on April 27th, buses will roll and kids will get on them and schools will open. With that being said, that is all the information that I, the superintendent, and the people assembled, three before me and two virtually through Zoom, know. Nobody has any additional information. MSD has gone out of its way to say that it will not provide any information until they are ready to provide that information. That being said, they met in session yesterday. Many things were decided that really helped guide us through the next 44 days, but nobody has made that decision or call yet.
And just, just as a side note, hot off the presses, Governor Hooking will have a press conference at 2:30 today.
So Governor, so
That's why I've been checking my phone, I'm sorry.
So there may be an announcement, there may not be an announcement. We don't know ahead of time. So if somebody thinks that there's an inside line on information and that we're withholding decisions from you, we are not. That being said, it would be incredibly irresponsible, responsible of us not to plan for closure until the end of the school year and then hope for the best. Hope that we do get to open early, that we do get to some. But right now, we are planning for closure till the end of the school year. But that, that decision has not been made. So please, parents, remain patient. That is probably the greatest gift that we can give to one another, is to recognize everybody is trying to find their way through each single day. And we are creating as we go. A month ago, we did not think, a month ago, we were, we, we had regular class. And now here we are today, and we're trying to educate 18,000 kids with 2,200 employees virtually in a county that does not have universal, high-speed Internet access. There are parts of this county that absolutely don't have it. And one-third of all of our students live below the poverty line. So they don't have a structured home life that necessarily has the luxuries of high-speed Internet or technology. And those are things that we're trying to find workarounds, but those are problems that really a school system isn't poised to solve. So today, we're going to have as an information item where we are with our online learning platforms, where we are with providing resources in hard copy, how we're mailing them, how we're trying to work through all of these. But recognize, it is an absolutely imperfect process. And I just need to applaud all of the people who have been working within the system to provide food, to come up with instructional resources, to get in place systems to provide social support and emotional support for, for students with our school counselors and psychologists and PPWs, but also to parents. Because I know every single day, I'm, I'm a parent of three, three boys, and one of them is in high school, and it has, we have been out of school for a month. And I am very well aware of everything that, that might be going through your mind because it's gone through my mind as well. So please continue to, to provide us the grace and patience that you've had and understand how much we deeply appreciate it. So with that, I conclude my remarks.
Okay. All right. Any public comment, Kathy?
No comments today.
All right. May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All right, roll call. Jim?
Yes.
Mary? Is it Mary, Mary? Mary, yes or no?
I, yes.
Rita?
Yes.
Kathy? Why can I not remember your name today? Myself isn't I. That's twice. Oh, my gosh. I need to go back to school.
You need to write that up.
Oh, my God, I have Kathy.
Big and clear.
All right, I'm sorry.
It's not like we don't talk often.
I know. All right. The first action item that we have today is the fire alarm replacements at Chopticon and Great Mills. Mr. Witten, the floor is yours.
Good morning, how are you today?
We are good.
Good morning. The fire alarm replacements at Chopticon and Great Mills High Schools. We went into the introduction, failure to request approval to award two contracts to ARC Systems Incorporated in the total amount of $282,999 for the replacement of the fire alarm devices. Those are the activation and notification devices only at Chopticon High School and Great Mills High School. Some background, the Department of Labor has performed annual testing of all fire alarm systems, all fire alarm devices. Additionally, these systems are activated, are exercised monthly with the school's fire alarm drills. And the existing devices in these two high schools are 23 and 25 years old respectively, with a lifespan of 15 to 25 years. Both systems have already required an emergency replacement of the main fire alarm panel. Both systems are fully functional. The existing devices are aging and repair parts for these systems are obsolete, and we're having a hard time finding them. Additionally, even, even online for retailers. The fire alarm devices will improve operational reliability and decrease service output. A little bit of background, the contract, of course, is to replace the fire alarm devices at Chopticon High School and Great Mills High School. The contract replacement will be completed within 90 days. It is a contract award. It comes with a two-year parts and labor warranty included. And the funding for this contract is provided through the local CIP program. The procurement method was an ITB. We issued two separate ITBs, ITB SMCPS 2020 DOM GFA for Chopticon and SMCPS 2020 DM DOM GFA for Great Mills. Both of them were issued on February 14th, opposed to an e-Maryland Marketplace and SMCPS Purchasing Office bid board in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland, Educational Article Font Ash 112, and with Board Policy DJC and Regulation DJCR. On February 24th, 2023, sealed bids were received and opened for ITB SMCPS 2020 DOM GFA for Chopticon. And then on February 27th, two sealed bids were received and opened for ITB SMCPS 2020 DOM GFA for Great Mills High School. For both ITBs, ARC Systems Incorporated was the lowest response bidder and fully met the requirements of both solicitation. With that, we're record, meaning Board of Education approved this agenda as presented.
Okay. For the three CIP action items, I have pretty much the same three questions. Number one is with the supply chain disruption that sometimes we are seeing across the states, do we expect any delays in this? And if not, then do we expect completion on time? And then, third, going on the complete other end of the spectrum, is that in the event that, you know, we, our buildings are closed prior to the last day of school in June, are we able to begin earlier on any of these projects? So
So, on the, on the first question with the parts, we have not had any reports of delays in fire alarm parts that we ordered for repairs. I have not spoken with the contractor about the magnitude. This would be about 601 devices you have to, I can check on that. The second question, if school remain close to the students, or the facilities remain close to the students, they would be able to start soon. This is CIP money that is currently available.
All right, Rita?
Have they done any work in the past at any of our schools?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, they've done, for me, they've done all the fire alarm, they do a lot of fire alarm repairs, they've done some installations as part of the general contractor for some of our renovations. They've also done the door monitoring systems at Great Mills, Chopticon, and Leonardtown High and several other schools down the way.
All right, thank you. Kathy?
I just appreciate that you're bringing this item forward. I know that, that the system reliability has been iffy at times in that there have been a number of false alarms that go off just for different sensors in the building. And I know that is never an easy, an easy experience for the fire department, having to respond as often as they may have to. So I, I hope that this will improve that reliability so that we'll have fewer false alarms going out.
Jim, do you have anything?
Mr. Davis, you're muted.
You got me now?
Yep, we got you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Witten, I think I heard you earlier saying that your replacement of sensors, but not the wiring, any of the electrical feeds, they have remaining?
Yes, sir. The existing wiring is going to be reused.
Okay, and they're in serviceable condition?
Yes, they are.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Mary? You're muted, Mary. Mary, you got unmute on your phone?
On her computer.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for bringing this forward, and I appreciate it, and so that we can move forward with it. Thank you for all your hard work.
Nagina, do you have anything?
No questions, thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, with that, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the award of the following contracts to ARC Systems Incorporated for the replacement of the fire alarm systems at Chopticon High School and Great Mills High School. SMCPS 2020 MCF A for $132,637 and SMCPS 2020 MGFA for $150,362. Further, that I move that the Board approves a construction contingency in the amount of $19,800 for these projects.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All right, Jim, I or nay?
I approve.
Mary?
Yes.
Rita?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And myself is an I. All right, motion passed. Thank you very much. All right, next up is Dr. Marr with the school calendar modifications for the current 2019-2020 school year.
Well, good morning, everyone. First of all, I want to thank you for the time to share this with you. As Dr. Smith shared earlier, there are already some changes that are happening with our calendar. As a result of the virus, obviously, we've been closed since Monday, the 16th, and we are scheduled to reopen on April 27th. With that said, we need to look at what happens if we are to open on April 27th. This is all, of course, you know, depending on if the state superintendent announces additional closings. April 27th for us on our original calendar is scheduled as a professional development day, so we would have been closed for students on that day. It is also listed as a possible makeup day. Should we return to schools, then we need to announce to the public that that would be a school day, not a professional development day, it would be a school day. Second, the next day, April 28th, on our current calendar, was scheduled as primary election day. As you know, that that day has been moved to June and has been moved to an online and mailing format, so we will not need to stay closed on that day. So our first recommendation is that we have schools in session on April 27th and 28th, which will be a change to our current calendar. Dr. Smith, yeah, the next slide would grant Dr. Smith the authority then to modify the school schedule as appropriate given our current closure. So if additional changes were to come forward, for example, yesterday, the state board allowed for the waiting of five of those days. We have five makeup days, especially if we, there are three at the end of the year and two on the 27th and 28th that we would have been closed. That gives us our five days to request the waiver from the state for those five days. And that would still have the closure of school, whether we are in session or learning is done through online opportunities. As the last day of school, then would be the 18th of June. So with that, we put these for your consideration.
Mrs. Weaver, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Kathy?
My only question is that the motion that you have provided does not specifically address the April 27th and April 28th days. So it, as I took the presentation, you're asking us both to approve those days as
Makeup days, right?
As makeup days, as well as grant the superintendent that authority. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, so we will modify the motion that you have provided.
All right, are you going to work on that while we go through those four questions?
Yes.
We'll kill some time. All right. Jim, do you have any questions or comments?
No, no, no questions.
Okay. Mary?
No questions, thank you.
Nagina, do you have anything?
No questions.
Okay. And I, so, just so to summarize and reiterate, by not canceling spring break last year, or last week, and, you know, Good Friday through Easter Monday, we are still in good shape to order or to end on the same date that we would have without, with the forgiveness of the five days, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So
So, yeah, so as it stands right now, the, our, our calendar will be, will be exact. So we will, with your approval of this, I will write to the state superintendent and request a waiver of five instructional slash continuity of learning days, which means we would then have to demonstrate 175 days that we were either in session or doing continuity of learning. And we'd be able to do that by using the three snow days that we had added into the schedule and using the 27th and the 28th as continuous learning days. So we are in perfect stead, and we don't have to modify anything.
Okay. All right. And then with the moving of the primary date from the end of May, or the end of April to the beginning of June, we've now granted you the authority to do with that date as see fit, based on whatever we hear back from the state?
Yes.
Okay. Just so everyone is clear on how that is going to work.
Yes.
So, all right. So any more questions from anyone? All right. May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education designate the dates April 27th and April 28th as in session for students in the event the state has students going back to school on April 27th. 27th.
Well, actually, we need them anyhow, right?
Yes, but.
Right.
Okay.
I just don't want people to think that we're going back to school on April 27th based on this motion. So, I, I move that the Board of Education designate April 27th and 28th as school in session. I move further that the Board of Education grant the superintendent the authority during the 2019-2020 school year to modify the school year calendar as needed as a result of the current pandemic-related closure.
Okay, can I have a second?
I second.
All right, voting, Jim, I or N?
I.
Mary? Did she say I?
Yeah.
Rita?
I.
Kathy?
I.
And myself is I. Motion is carried, thank you very much. And we will move on to Paola with the roof contract for Great Mills High School, finally. It's been on the, on the CIP for what seems like ever.
Okay, hold on one second, I have to find that one. You are just too fast.
This is like other duties as assigned.
I don't know of any other superintendent who is the Zoom host anywhere, so. All right, contractor work for partial roof replacement, and we're doing Great Mills High School first. All right, there it is, that's now open, we're going to close this, we're going to have this right here, then I have to go back into my Zoom meeting, then I have to go to my screen share, and then I have to do this, and then I have to share, and then I have to present. All right, that was easy.
All right, there we go, all right, you are on.
Everybody?
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, thank you for letting us do this via Zoom. The technology is there, so it's, it's very well appreciated. I'm here to request approval to award a contract in the amount of $1,960,830 for construction services, and $294,125 for construction contingency to Coal Roofing Company Inc. for the partial roof replacement at Great Mills High School. Our capital improvement program includes funding for the partial roof replacement of this 26-year-old existing buildup roof at Great Mills High School. We are scheduled to complete this work during the summer of 2020, and we are asking, we are requesting the services of our roof contractor firm to serve as our prime contractor. The scope of this project is approximately 71,500 square foot of existing buildup roof, and we are planning on replacing it with a four ply buildup roof. We will also be replacing flashing, train cars, downspots, drain. The procurement method followed is a multi-step procurement aligned with the guidelines of the public school construction and with our policy, and we do it in two steps. First, where we ask technical qualifications in the first step, and we specify criteria that is based on experience, expertise, financial and legal standing. We evaluate all these technical qualifications that we have received, and then only pre-qualified bidders are permitted to submit in the second step of the procurement process, and then the contract is awarded based on the lowest bid submitted, based in responsiveness and responsibility. The procurement method that we used was the RFP, we put a roof place on RFP on In Maryland Marketplace on February 14th of 2020. We got about 373 contractors receiving notifications. Five contractors submitted technical proposals, and after analyzing all those five contractors, we decided to pre-qualify four firms and invited them to bid on March 10th, and all four of those pre-qualified bidders submitted a bid. We are recommending for selection Coal Roofing Company Inc., our lowest bidder. They have a very wide experience in roofing for many years. Recently, last year, in the spring of 2019, they celebrated their century as a, as a family-owned company, family center committed to excellence. They are very well-known in the Baltimore area, and I mentioned here 21 years of roofing experience, but they've been doing work for roofs since 1955. It's just that 21 years ago, they changed their name and officially called themselves a Coal Roofing Company. They have experience with other jurisdictions, Baltimore County, Charles County, and Montgomery County Public Schools, but they're in their portfolio, they have very interesting projects like the MNT Bank Stadium in Baltimore, National Aquarium, they have the US Navy Academy and the Baltimore City Hall. Very good recommendations, preferences, and. Their bid, their base bid was $1,915,830, and we are recommending adding alternate number one, which was going from a three ply to a four ply for $45,000. And that brings the award to $1,960,830, and we're asking a contingency of $294,125, which is 15% of the construction cost. I include our financial summary, we have funds available to include the alternate and making it a better roof. And we will still have balance in our, in this project. This, this, fortunately, the market this year is better for us in terms of money, so we will be able to do the roof as planned, and we don't have to do like the deal that we had, the scenario that we had last year. And with this, I am recommending that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented, and, and questions?
Mrs. Weaver?
No, no questions.
Kathy?
When do you anticipate they would be able to start this project?
We have, I've been in contact conversations with the vendor, because as soon as they found out that they were, they opened a bid publicly, and they see that they were the lowest bidder, they're, they're anxious to start, they know that the buildings are closed. They, they were asking back and forthings to see if construction was going to be altered in our way regarding governor's mandate, with contact the state, and we got the okay to continue our projects as planned. So, as soon as we are, we're able to award, my next step will be to present this to IIC for award of the construction, construction award. I have to submit the documents this week to get into the agenda for May meeting, and right after that, if, if we get all the approvals from, from the board and from the IIC, I'm expecting to start the, the first meeting mid or end of May.
Okay, and how long do you anticipate the project will take to complete?
So, the project is scheduled to be done during the whole summer. Now, that schedule might be altered if we have advantage of getting into the building earlier. I've contacted the designer, and the designer has contacted suppliers. This will be, the challenge is getting the material, but we don't anticipate any delay in getting the materials of now. All the suppliers are in contact with the manufacturers, and plans are as of now open and are capable to provide.
Great, thank you, that's all I have.
Jim, do you have any questions?
Yes, I was wondering if you have a breakdown on the cost per square foot of your log in?
I don't have it, I can do the math. Great Mills, it's a 71.
Off my head, I'm thinking some.
Say it again?
I was thinking it was like 100, um, I'm sorry, I'll let you do the calculation.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's 71,500 square feet, so.
All right, divided in the.
1.9.
Yeah.
And 26?
$26 a square foot.
Yeah. And, yeah, and it's, it's based on the nine items too that we asked you to basically.
Right. Is that, that number, would you say that that is a, a number that you would normally see for a built-up hot-mop roof?
Yes, in a very good market, like the one we're seeing now, just starting to see. You had this question last year, I had a different, completely different scenario, and I think you remember that we had to go to rebid because the roofs were the ones that were bringing the bids high.
Right.
Right now, we got a deal, and even in conversations with DGS, they, we are all surprised that the market is low, that's why we're getting lower bids.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Let's see, Mary? You're muted, Mary. Okay, go ahead.
It's good to get the lower bids, unfortunately, due to the coronavirus, but thank you so much because the roofs are needed of replacement, they are over 26 years old, and it's, it's time, so they fare very well. Thank you so much for your diligence.
Nagina?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the construction award to Coal Roofing Company Incorporated in the amount of $1,960,830, and a construction contingency in the amount of $294,125 for the partial roof replacement at Great Mills High School.
Do you have a second?
I second.
All right, roll call, Jim?
I approve.
Mary?
Yes.
Rita?
Yes.
Kathy?
I.
Myself, approved. All right, motion is carried, thank you very much. And you just want to roll right into the one for Green Holly now?
Give me one second.
Oh, sorry.
You are so fast, I tried to be ready. There we go.
So, I'm here again for the roof replacement at Green Holly, and to request the approval to award the contract amount of $1,736,618 for construction services, and $208,394 for construction contingency to Coal Roofing Company Inc. for the partial roof replacement at Green Holly Elementary School. And the information is about the same as we did previously for Great Mills. We have included this in our capital improvement plan, this is a roof that is 30 years old existing, so it's all shingles at this moment, and we are replacing it with standing cement. Work is also scheduled to be completed in the summer, and we're also asking for a prime roof contractor to be our prime contractor. We are replacing 51,700 square feet of existing asphalt with standing cement and the flashing train cars and downspots. Let's say we follow the same procurement method, it was multi-step procurement, first step for technical qualifications, and the second step is on the lowest responsible and responsibility. Our RFP was also posted on February 14th, we, 373 contractors that received notifications, this time we got six contractors that submitted technical proposals, and out of those six, we were only able to pre-qualify two of those firms, and they were invited to bid on March 10th, and both firms submitted bids. And again, Coal Roofing Company was the lowest bidder, and I'm anxious to work with them, they are a very, very big firm in Baltimore, and they did participate, looking back at our records, they did participate at point in 2018, but they were not the lowest bidder. So, right now, again, we're having a different market, and we're going to be able to work with a great contractor. Coal Roofing bid is $1,698,618, and the study is recommending adding alternate number one for counter flashing for $38,000. This flashing will make us a better tight, watertight system in our roof, and the total amount recommended for award is $1,736,618, and this time, we are recommending a 12% construction cost of $208,394. And if you ask me why 12% in this case, and not 15 like I did in Great Mills, the substrate in this project is wood versus the substrate in Great, in Great Mills, Great Mills has a variety of substrate, we have gypsum steel wood, and that makes a more, more of a surprise, we don't know until we open those roofs. So, I feel confident that a 12% is good, usually it's between 10 and 15, and we feel good that tomorrow we'll be able to make it. And with that, I'll use all the funds available that we have for this project, including the financials that are here for your review. And at this moment, we are requesting that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented, and I'm open for questions?
Mrs. Weaver?
What part of the Green Holly School will be completed?
It's the B roof, to the left side, which is the peach roof.
All right, the other thing too is the, the communication system, will they need to coordinate with the, that group in order to, when they are doing the roof, because some of the, the communication system has outside air horns, and I'm not sure if those would go on the side of the building, or if they would go on the roof, or where they really go.
Usually, we don't, but we will be opening ceilings for drainage, for the, changing the drainage, so that will give the PA system an opportunity to work better too, and I'm, I'm working with IT, the Department of IT, to get this project coordinated with us too.
All right, thank you.
Kathy?
So, the, if I did my math correctly, the cost per square foot for this is a bit higher than the one for Great Mills High School, this one comes in at about $33 a square foot? Is that because of the standing metal ceiling?
Yeah, it, it's a different material.
Okay.
It's shaming.
Standing cement, the cost is, is higher, but the duration of the product, of the material, standing cement, you are not going to find the duration until 50 years.
Right, I think you said the life expectancy of those roofs is much longer, so the value, the return on our investment in spending the money for this is going to pay dividends in the long run, correct?
Yes, yes, correct. And that's what we are doing in the latest projects, we, Hollywood is also doing standing cement.
Do you anticipate, especially since this construction firm is so large, that they will have crews to be able to do both Green Holly and Great Mills at about the same time?
Yes, yes, they don't, they, there's no problem. Yes, yes, they don't, they, there's no problem with that.
Super, that's all I have, thank you.
Jim? Jim?
Um, I have no questions, but I have a comment. Um, talking about the durability of metal roofs. Um, I recall, uh, reading an article that there are homes that were built during the revolution with tin and lead roofs that are still standing to this day. Just, just a little trivia.
Thank you.
Well noted, Jim, thank you. Mary?
No questions, good job.
Nagina?
No questions, thank you.
All right, and thank you. And with that, can I have a motion for this recommended action item? I move-
I approve that the Board of Education approve the construction award to Coal Roofing Company Incorporated in the amount of one million, seven hundred thirty-six thousand dollars, um, one million, seven hundred thirty-six, six hundred eighteen dollars, and a construction contingency in the amount of two hundred eight thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars for the partial roof replacement at Green Holly Elementary School.
Do you have a second?
My second.
All right, uh, Jim?
I.
Mary?
I.
Rita?
I.
Kathy?
I.
Myself, I. Motion is carried. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Next up, I will go slow, so Scott can load the presentation.
Yeah, went in the wrong folder here.
Is the Division of Instruction Continuity of Learning Plan during school closure. And we have a whole group of presenters. Mrs. Bachner, Dr. Jaffers, Dr. Hall, Mr. Serbiak, and Ms. Long.
All right, let me go and share, and then present, and then maximize.
Well done, Dr. Jaffers, you held yourself to nine slides.
Yeah. So who's going to start us off?
Are any of them tuned in? No one. Are they tuned in?
Did you let them into the meeting?
Yeah, they're all here. All right, so who's, who's starting this presentation?
I am, I thought you could hear me, I'm sorry, this is Lisa Bachner.
Hi, Lisa Bachner.
Oh, there she is, okay. We can hang now.
Now, um, as you can see by this presentation, this has definitely been a collaborative team effort. Um, and I'm just going to start with, um, the Department of Critical Instruction, um, and our part of this puzzle that we've been working on. And I, before I want to start, I do want to say that, um, I am not coming with this information alone. The supervisors, the content supervisors have worked tirelessly, as well as a cohort of teachers working with each of the supervisors to make this happen. So, much appreciated, and I'm very, very fortunate to work with the people I work with, um, both as part of this presentation and to help make this happen. So, um, I just wanted to make sure I, I thanked them before I went on. Um, as you probably know, we have selected and aligned to content standards two online platforms. And that's really important to know, that we just didn't select online learning platforms. We took time to make sure that they were aligned to the content that we were teaching, and made sure that for the fourth marking period especially, they addressed the standards, if kids weren't in front of us, that they could experience online. So we suggest, uh, we adopted Imagine Learning for grades K through five, and Edgenuity for grades six through twelve. Those are our two primary online platforms. Um, our department, after we did the alignment, um, working with Ms. Dr. Jaffers' department, and making sure those platforms were accessible to both teachers and students. Then we started working on providing professional development to the teachers so that they can utilize those, uh, those platforms. That occurred the week of March twenty-seven through thirty, but I want you to know that's ongoing. Every single week that we are close to students and teachers are providing online learning, we have ongoing professional development opportunities for teachers every single day that they can take advantage of, or if they need assist. So that will be ongoing by supervisors from all departments. Um, and then we also include in coordination with the online platforms talent resources for those students who aren't able to access, um, the online platforms. And we're still working on distribute, distributing those. As of April seventh, we had fifteen hundred and forty-nine requests, and as of this morning, we have seventeen hundred and ten requests. So, um, that number continues to increase, um, and, um, uh, we will continue to fulfill those requests.
Alex?
Uh, good morning, how's everybody doing today?
Good.
Good morning.
Yeah, I want to, similar to what Lisa's done, I want to acknowledge our department. Our department, uh, they've worked tirelessly to get this ramped up. Uh, I, I am, we're not going to give Maureen credit, but I am here, and I know it's a public event, but...
For goodness sakes, Dr. Jaffers, it's her birthday.
I.
She turns sixty-six today, I hear. But I do want to, um, I do want to acknowledge Maureen's, um...
Sorry. I should get to unmute my mic for that, but it's my turn.
I do want to acknowledge, in all seriousness, this has been a very coordinated effort under Maureen's direction, uh, you know, and under certainly Dr. Smith's purview. We, we worked tirelessly to get this ramped up. I mean, it begins with the, the content supervisor giving us, you know, twenty hours worth of content, and then I take that and work with our team, off in Selig, Jeff Gibson, et cetera. We, we worked to support these efforts. So I do want to acknowledge the entire, you know, coordinated effort with Student Services, with, um, of course, Special Education, and, um, ECI as well. So, um, and of course, Kelly Hall's involved with all of us too, as, um, up at D O S. So thank you for the leadership, Maureen. Uh, and again, what we've had to work through is this idea of, um, you know, we've had teacher-facing resources, and then parent-facing resources. Uh, and again, um, we, we've tried to make this simple, go through CLAB. CLAB is our sort of single sign-on. Uh, we've asked all of our students and teachers and admin to, to log into, uh, and we've sort of captured data accordingly. So, uh, as you can see right here, uh, that's the CLAB access, this is the data as of a few days ago. We've had about close to eighty percent of all of our registered students, uh, access our online platforms, and over eighty percent of our teachers access. Uh, as you may have heard, um, I believe, um, we talked about Google Classroom. Uh, there are courses at secondary that are outside the Edgenuity platform, and I believe that we are using Google Classroom. Unfortunately, uh, we've, uh, we've had teachers work with our department to ramp this up in this current school year, so we didn't miss a beat. You know, some were I P teachers, some were I P classes, have not missed a beat because of this integration of platform. Um, also here is the idea that, um, we're significantly lowering our login failures. Uh, and we also have data here that displays the types of devices that, that teachers and students are using to access our platforms. And again, uh, we, we also had a look at the inequity across the county with who had a device, who did not have a device, and that's what Lisa's been working on with print copies and things of that nature.
Okay, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Serbiak.
Uh, Special Education, I'd like to diddle kind of what Alex had said. I'm, uh, very impressed actually, and, um, very pleased and grateful that we do have D L I and the collaboration with the supports under Maureen and Dr. Smith. I also want to thank, again, supervisors, they are, they are working tirelessly. And I also want to thank schools, I E P chairs and teachers, understanding that these are very hard times. And the expectations and information and documentation that we are rolling out to staff, it's a lot of information and a lot of work. And, and the staff and our paras, and everyone at our school systems have been working very hard in getting the documentation needed as we are going through this pandemic. So I just wanted to thank them. Um, looking at our plan, we have the Continuity of Learning Special Education Plan. I wanted to just make clear that this is not replacing a student's I E P in any way. This is a plan that we are going to be reaching out to every student, amending each I E P using this plan to address what an I E P looks like under the circumstances in virtual and remote learning. So again, we are not, um, removing an I E P, this is an amendment to an I E P, and how we can implement that I E P through what we are, um, the system is using as education at this time. With that being said, the I E P lives, it's alive, and I D E A does not change during these times. Specially-designed instruction, we have given every teacher a Google Voice account, special education teacher. This will help us with the specially-designed instruction through supplementary aids. If a student is struggling, a family has a phone number that they can reach out and contact a teacher to support. And again, everything is individualized. We are not just sending letters to families saying, this is the plan. Every student in our system has access to their teacher so that we can individualize and specially-design their instruction as pertaining to their I E P. And part of the Continuity of Learning Special Education Plan, that is also going to be addressing their I E P goals and objectives, again, individualized. We are focusing on certain I E P goals and objectives, and every student's I E P and every teacher will be reaching out to those families to have those discussions with families. And, uh, we are also going to be providing direct related services for our speech and language, P T and O T students.
Can I ask a question while?
Sure.
Okay. So, um, Mr. Serbiak, are, are any of the teachers or aides doing like a one-on-one time, let's say, every day at eleven o'clock, they are doing, uh, I guess you would say like an online, like what we're doing here, teaching for any of their students, individual or as a class?
So what's happening right now is with the Google Voice account, again, we're doing everything individualized per student. The staff have office hours, and families are aware of phone numbers that they can be reached in the office hours that they can be reached at, as well as, um, I E P, or excuse me, uh, email. So if a family member reaches out and is struggling with, um, say, a reading passage, they can call and contact the teacher. Um, we are leaving that open to staff if they wanted to do a, um, conference call like thing with Google Voice with families, they certainly can have that option and work that through with families.
All right, thank you.
Any discussion there, uh, Mr. Serbiak of the Related Services using the Doxy Me platform?
Yep, so Related Service right now is currently working. We wanted every Related Service provider to be trained in Doxy Me. Um, and we want to obviously make that Doxy Me platform, it is FERPA and HIPAA compliant. But again, we wanted to make sure that we did train all our Related Services, obviously safety concerns, and we are video conferencing with students, and we just want to make sure that it's as safe as possible and, uh, and know that it is HIPAA and FERPA compliant.
Yeah, so that is our, that is the medical version, it's a much more, um, robust Zoom-type platform, right? So it's video interfacing across this platform as opposed to using something open source like Zoom?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my turn. So we want to talk a little bit about the little people. And so we have, um, we're not using Imagine Learning, we're not using, um, Edgenuity, obviously, because our students are three and four years old. But we did want to offer them, and, some online resources that are developmentally appropriate, and they're also receiving a packet in the mail. So the online resources include Frolo Street, the parent portal in both English and Spanish, Scholastic, which has day-to-day resources, phonological, um, online resources for students that need help with wordplay, rhyming, finger plays, those kinds of things. And then a beginning phonics worksheet as well. And then because so many of our, uh, early childhood students do come from an economically disadvantaged background, and to reinforce that hands-on learning, we're mailing all of them a packet that supports the online resources, but also student independently. And there are things that they can do that are not just, you know, worksheet kinds of things that require real engagement. There are little three packets of Play-Doh inside, a dry erase board, a dry erase marker, um, a small pack of crayons, a work map for, you know, math work as well as language and literacy. So, uh, and we're reaching out with our teachers, our teachers are reaching out to their parents. I would be remiss if I did not thank folks from the early childhood team, Cheryl Latis Woodley representing Title One, Lynne Turner, our early childhood coach, has been fabulous, and, uh, she is ready to start assembling as our order is coming into mail. Um, Andy Owens, Sarah Brand and Martina, um, Martina Green, as well as the whole D O I team. We've all been in this together, and we're trying to do something that really does mirror, as best as we can, what happens in our classrooms. And then finally, you know, lots of questions. This is the time of year, in fact, it is the week of the young child right now, where we would be opening our pre-K and Head Start application, and we also would be taking new registrations for kindergarten. With schools not being open for the staff to, to receive the documents and help parents, um, you know, record the, bring those confidential documents in, we just kind of put a pin in it. And what we're going to do is we are going to wait until they reopen, and then establish a date, and, you know, work through the summer. And again, I'll rely heavily on the team to do that. So there is going to be a press release forthcoming that basically says it will be delayed, and then there will be another one when, when that, that date is, that schools are open, and it'll remind parents and guardians of what they need to bring.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Long.
I want to echo the words of my D O I team members, really, and recognize the leadership of Dr. Smith and Dr. Montgomery, who have continually been there to support us in the work that we're doing. So thank you both. The staff and Student Services is focused on continuity of services to our students and our families. They are staying connected to our students and families to support them during this time. The P P Ws are contacting families and working on removing barriers for students and families to access learning opportunities and food resources. They are partnering with community agencies to support the needs of our families. The counselors are creating shared activities to support social-emotional learning. They're working on course registration and also ongoing support services for our students. School psychologists are providing ongoing counseling and support to our families, as well as strategies and resources to assist students and families during the school closure. They're also working on a plan for support for our return to school at some point. Our social workers are continuing to provide behavioral therapy to those identified students that they were working with prior to the school closure. They're also continuing to provide after-care sessions for those students that were identified, um, through recent hospitalizations, and, uh, providing general mental health support as well. Our nurses are connecting with families, specifically related to immunizations and following up on the vision and hearing screenings. They are also working in groups to update, virtually in groups, to update the school nurse manual content to ensure best practice. They're working, uh, they're engaging professional development to maintain their clinical competency. Any questions or comments at this time?
I'll just start, I just, once again, want to say thank you. I know, I alluded to it and gave everyone some stats during my board report. Um, of all the challenges that the different school systems are having across the state, of course, I, I, I think you guys just completely knocked it out of the park. I mean, I know there's glitches, I know there's some people that are not happy, but, um, the majority of my experience of it with my two children in middle school and high school has been pretty much seamless. Um, you know, the content is there, the teachers are responsive, and I just cannot imagine the huge heavy lift that everyone had in order to load everything up and have everyone ready. Um, and keep in mind, they weren't just ready yesterday, they were ready last week. So, um, you know, I, I just, I can't thank everyone enough, I think hats off to everyone.
I, I echo what Karen said. You know, I, I think this has been a huge undertaking, and you're having to go with it day by day, just kind of figuring out what's going on. So I think you've done a fabulous job, everybody.
I would certainly echo those, those comments. I, I know I've, I've heard anecdotally a few folks, um, students having difficulty logging in or, or, you know, getting, getting online, um, but I'm not, I don't know if that's a function on our end, or if in some cases, because there are so many workers from the base who are teleworking, and, um, if you've got your kids at the same time trying to get online, that, you know, somebody, one or more people in the house are, are online for video conferences, um, the, the bandwidth you may have in your home, I think, may also be a, a challenge to support the kind of heavy lift that, that's, it's being expected to, to support. Uh, it sounds like we have two different kinds of packets going out. The, um, the pre-K, Head Start sort of specialized program, packets. When do we expect that those will be, um, in students, the hands of students and families? And then with the rest of the pack- And then with the rest of the packets that we have, I know you indicated, Dr. Smith, that you, we had sent some out already and some of those returned as the addresses were problematic. When exactly do you expect that, that families can know that they will have those hard packets in hand for their students?
So, Lisa?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can, I can share with you where we are right now. We are pretty much up to date with elementary packets because they're very, I want to say simple to do, but they're a lot easier to do. When it comes to middle and high school students, we have to pull their individual schedule and then build their packet according to their schedule, so it's a little more time-consuming. But I've called in some trips this week with permission from Dr. Smith and Dr. Montgomery. So, I have four supervisors with me today that are helping me get those middle and high schools. So, our goal is hopefully to get all the orders at least that are in by today out by Friday for all middle school and high school, but elementary is pretty much to date.
Okay. And then my other question, I know that at our board meeting the end of March, Dr. Smith, you, you talked about the, the laptops that we were going to be able to make available to students. And I know earlier in, in Mrs. Bailey's report, board report, she talked about how Montgomery County had 45,000 laptops that they were able to access and, laptops and hotspots that they were able to go to a warehouse, pull out and, and distribute to students who needed them. You had mentioned a number which I think maybe was misinterpreted. Can you speak to how many laptops we have available to provide to students and what the status is in terms of students having access to that and then how they're able to utilize those if they don't have internet access in their home for whatever reason?
Right. So, is Dr. Walker still on the line?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. What's our current cost for the laptop, the individual student laptop? Do you have the price point for that?
The last batch of computers we purchased were right around $300.
Okay. Okay. So, if you remember, the, when we had fund balance earlier in the year, we went back to you and because we had not received the funding in this year's budget, initially, we said we're going to take a large portion of this fund balance, we're going to buy technology. So, we had done that, which means that we had, I think, about 1,000 computers that were getting ready to be deployed out to schools that had been delivered to central office, to the, to the Loveville office and were in, in the warehouse. Those computers, about 1,000, correct, Dr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. About 1,000, we were able to lay hands on, they hadn't gone out to schools, we were able to configure them appropriately so they'd be able to be used off-site, they were already in, and they're already in boxes. And so, that was the, that was the first work that we did as we drew down in the first two weeks of closure, we had 12-month staff working on getting those all up and running. We, the very first thing we did was recognize that we have staff members who are one of our 2,200 employees who don't have access to a computer. They don't have a home computer, so they're the first ones, par educators. We don't distribute a laptop to a par educator normally. They were the first group that we had to reach out to, find out who didn't have those devices, so we could actually give them a laptop computer so they could do their professional development, online learning, all the things that they need to do for continuity of learning. So, that was about 185 of this 1,000 computers that we have distributed. We also reached out very targeted to some of our, some of our seniors who are in advanced placement coursework, who said that they didn't have access to a technology device because they're going to need to do their online end-of-year and it looks like the, the AP assessments may be online. So, we made sure that they were provided for. That means we have about 850 of these computers that we have not deployed yet, that we are going to start handing out at the high school level this week. It is a very finite resource. We are going to start with the seniors in our high schools that haven't been able to log on, so we'll look and see who hasn't been able to log on through Clever, and then we are contacting them directly to find out what the challenges are, what the barrier is, and if a device would be appropriately deployed to them. So, we are preparing to hand out several hundred this week just to high schools, seniors first, and then working our way down. Those are the computers that we have on hand. The Enterprise has reported several times that we have 9,000 computers ready to be handed out. That is absolutely not correct. I don't know where they got that, they certainly didn't get the quote from me. I did say publicly that the school system has a one-to-two ratio. We have 18,000 kids, so we have about 9,000 machines in our buildings that are Windows 10 devices. We are not prepared to hand out 9,000 computers because the challenge is, what happens? You hand them out, do you get them back? What if they're damaged? When schools open, what do you use if you've handed out all of your computers? Larger systems like Montgomery County have on hand thousands of devices sitting in a warehouse that they can turn around and distribute. We are lucky that you made decisions at the beginning of the year to purchase more computers with those funds, and so we did have 1,000 that we could lay hands on fairly easily and be relatively ready to deploy. This is the great conversation that really needs to be had and it leads to our budget conversation next. Every single year, I ask for $7,000 to $9,000 in local funding and every single year, we don't receive that.
Nine million.
Nine million. Pardon me. That would be important to correct.
Yes.
We don't receive those funds. As a result, we don't receive those funds either in recurring money or one-time money. Then we are left to our own devices. And that means that we don't have the ability to purchase one-to-one computers. Now, there may be the CARES Act money. When that becomes available, that's going to be $3 million. We will take that $3 million and we will buy computers with it, period. That only solves half of the problem. This is a really interesting county. There are some who have high-speed internet, there are some who have cable, there are some who do not have cable, there are many who don't have high-speed internet. So, it's not just a question of giving you a device. If you can't connect the device, then it's really nothing more than a, than a typewriter. Oh, my God, going far, that far back, right? So, we're not going to solve that problem. I can't go out and do broadband, whatever. That's not, that's not my, that's, that's not the school system's responsibility. We know whose responsibility that is. What we can do is come up with a workaround. So, we are distributing the laptops that we have, about 1,000. We don't have 9,000 to distribute, we have 9,000 computers altogether in the school system. What Dr. Walker has been working on with his staff is to make each one of the parking lots of our schools Wi-Fi zones, high-speed internet zones, to take advantage of the fiber that's laid to each one of our public schools and the bandwidth that we're all paying for. We're not there yet. We started, Dr. Walker, you started that when?
We were all installed last week, we're testing systems, there's significant functionality already in those nine, nine school locations, but we're testing some, we still have a few issues we need to look at.
Yeah. So, we, we will hopefully by the beginning of next week, we'll put out a press release that says that we have nine school sites from the furthest south to the furthest north to several centrally that have high-speed internet. If you drive into the parking lot and you sit there and open a laptop computer, you can use your school system credentials, students and staff, to have access to the same high-speed internet that you'd have within the building. We are having challenges with smartphones and tablets that run a different iOS, correct?
It's just a matter of how the, I think right now we're looking at the signal boosting and how it impacts the connection to the mobile device, but laptops are working very well, computers themselves are working great in the parking lots.
Yeah. So, again, we're, and we're doing that with available money right now. So, we shifted around, we moved this to do that, we, we used that. Staff isn't supposed to be reporting right now, so just understand that. We're supposed to all be quarantined, but we're, but we're not quarantined because we're having, working with, we're, we're trying to do all of this within the confines that we have. And I understand how frustrating it is for somebody that's like, where's, where's my, where's my laptop? Where's, where's my hotspot? Well, that's great. Montgomery County gets $18,700 per student. We get 14. So, if we got $4,000 more per student, I could give you a laptop, a Wi-Fi, I could probably give you a full-time tech support, I could, who knows what I could give you for that much money every single year recurring. So, there's these great comparisons, even Calvert, substantially more than us, Charles, substantially more than us. When you really look at per pupil funding, this is where it becomes apparent. It's when we have, we're, we're looking for all these resources that everybody wants. So, this is a great time to be then talking about budget as it rolls into next. I cannot tell you how proud I am of the work that, that, that everybody is doing, supporting services in particular, IT specifically, to, to come up with workarounds and solutions and creative ways to get kids connected. Because I can tell you, we're sitting right now in a room, if you were to pan back, where there's just tables with packets of paper. To deliver somebody a packet of paper and say, hey, that, that, that's the same thing as going to school for a marking period, that's, that's a very sad substitute for what public education is all about. Being connected and using the, the platforms that we have are, are better, are better than, but there's still no substitute for public education, for that face-to-face interaction. This whole conversation is really a look under the hood for what schools do. We educate, we feed, we help with social-emotional learning, we support, we direct resources, all of these things. And right now, we're being asked to do it remotely and we're, honestly, we have great people doing the very best work that they can. So, to, I can tell you that when federal money becomes available, we're going to spend it on laptops and probably by the time we open school next year, if this money materializes, we will be in a much better place for being able to deliver a one-to-one technology resource for secondary students particularly in the event that we ever close like this. We are, we are learning every single day. That is the one thing that I can say we do better, I think, than anybody else is, we learn every single day.
And you made the comment that these are things that people want, that we have had in our budget in years past. I think the situation we're in right now proves that that was not something we wanted, that is something that we desperately needed and continue to need. And so, that, that need is not going to change. I think only the fact that we are seeing the results of it right now, and I would argue that, that there are going to be ripple effects that will go years into the future because when you look at our youngest children that we normally are able to have in pre-K, who are already not starting at the starting line, they're starting behind the starting line, now we have pushed them farther back and we are going to have to find a way to make up what those students especially have lost. And I, I greatly appreciate all the work that everybody's been doing. I just want the public to understand that when the doors reopen and life resumes, whatever life looks like at the end of this, there, we're going to be trying to catch up for a long time to come and there's going to be a great cost, both financial, across the board, as well as just a, a social-emotional impact on kids that we are going to have to deal with in the schoolhouse every day. So, stand by, folks. That's it.
Okay. Jim, do you have anything?
Uh, Dr. Smith, you had mentioned earlier about hotspots. I would assume that most every student has a phone. And it would appear to me that'd be a kind of a poor man's way of getting high-speed internet to the masses. Is that true?
I can answer that. The problem with that, Jim, is every student might have a phone, but it depends on your data plan. So, you can have an unlimited data plan and you can use it as much as you want, but even then with the change, with everyone being on their phones and at home working right now, the, a lot of the cell phone carriers still have the ability to slow down your service. So...
It's throttling back big time.
Right. It doesn't, it, it doesn't, it, it doesn't matter really what, yes, we probably do a lot of students have a, a plan, but if you don't have an unlimited plan, you, you know, you have to watch a 20-minute video on a class that eats up that immediately.
And also, like where I live at, a lot of times you don't even get phone service.
Yes. You're right. There are parts of this county that don't have phone service.
And, yeah. So, that's a problem with us. And I'm very grateful to the IT department. Thank you for putting the hotspots out there.
Yeah. So, do you have anything else?
Oh, the only thing I'd like to add to, to Mr. Davis is that the, the platforms that we, that we've used, Ingenuity actually works on a smartphone. It's not perfect, but it does work on a smartphone and it looks like about 13%, I think, of our kids have actually accessed the Clever portal through their smartphone.
Yeah. I was thinking that if, if there were some limitations to the hotspot app, that the school could augment or, you know, bolster the capabilities of the hotspot capability. I was just, most kids have got phones.
Yeah.
And that might be a vehicle.
All right. Mary, do you have anything?
I want to thank everybody for doing a job because this is something that came up suddenly and everybody had to shift gears. And I think our school system has done a wonderful job of shifting gears to get the, to continue learning for students, online learning, and we're going to learn a lot through this process. And so, I thank everybody for their hardworking efforts.
All right. And I just have one last comment. Thank you to, I think, Dr. Marr, who I know narrated and possibly spearheaded the whole Ingenuity video. I know there was a lot of confusion among all the high school parents and just, so everyone knows, and Dr. Jaffers, you can jump in, but I mean, that is a purely pure platform, that the whole point of it is you can only log in one class at a time, so there's no, you know, ability to quote-unquote cheat or, you know, alter documents or anything along those lines.
Yeah, exactly. Let's say it's a robust online platform and that's why we're having a hard time with a commensurate response with print copies because it is an online robust program. It's hard to emulate that same experience in a, in a print world. So, so, you're absolutely right, Alice Bailey, it just, it's, it's very intuitive, but at the same time, it's, it's designed to be completely instructed online 100% of the time. Yes.
Right. So, all right, yeah, so thank you for those additional resources and for the heaven's sakes, if you're going to use Ingenuity, you have to use Chrome. That needs to be a banner somewhere because there's still a lot of people that are using Internet Explorer and they keep getting kicked out and don't understand why. So, Chrome-based, Chrome-based, so. All right. Nagina, do you have anything?
Yes. I was gonna say that I know I'm very happy and I know many other students are happy to have such a large team working to continue an education for them and although it's quite a bit of a change and it's not ideal, but it's definitely good to review and especially for students taking the new updated AP exam that's going to now be a 45-minute-long essay question. It's good for them to review all the content that they have learned over the year and get used to doing it online, which is, it's normally done on paper in school and it's anywhere from like two to three hours. So, it's been good to get back to doing schoolwork and not be bored or as bored.
Well said, Nagina. Thank you. All right. And then just one quick one for Ms. Long. Just can you speak really briefly about the guidance counselors and how they are continuing to, I get, contact the students, especially the rising classes in high school, to coordinate their class selections for next year?
Yeah. But, yes, they are. They're doing it through, for the ninth graders, they're doing it through a survey that they're sending out. They're also making phone contact as well. So, they are continuing to contact all students regarding that.
Okay. That's good because I know there were some questions floating out there about that too. So...
And, and just another look under the hood, so all of the current teachers, one of the things that they do through their teacher access center is they actually make the recommendations for the next year courses for students and that's where the counselors usually start, is they'll go in and look at those teacher recommendations and then they'll work off of that, those recommended courses to then say which would be this and that as they, as they individually bill. courses to then say which would be this and that, as they individually build their schedules with their students. And that is actually one thing that they could do through the Doxy platform.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Ms. McCourt, you have the last two items. First up is the March financial report.
All right, let me go find. See, it takes me all the way back. There we go. March financial reports. Let me go back into this. Let me go into this. Let me go into share. All right.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll start with talking about FY '20 and our current position, and then we'll end up with a review of FY '21 and, or forecast our next fiscal year. So, our current revenues stand at $180.3 million, and we have a balance, vestuary balance of $46.2 million. We have received 71.6% of our revenues. And going on to the third page, we have encumbrances outstanding of $73.4 million. Year-to-date encumbrances and expenses of $219.5 million and available balance of $7 million. We have either expended or encumbered 96.89% of our budget. One item of particular note for our group health insurance, we currently have a budgetary savings of $536,000. This is only budgetary savings, because it represents the premiums that we have paid to CareFirst, however, it does not actually represent our exceptionally positive claims position that's being held with CareFirst at this time. All other categories are looking good at this time, and we have been able to move monies around on a budgetary basis to cover all of the COVID-related costs, and we've been tracking those very closely, and we've been able to get some FEMA or MIA reimbursement nets. Are there any questions regarding the financials?
Anyone?
No.
Jim or Mary?
No, no questions, thank you.
Nagina? Did we lose her? No. Nagina's video went dead.
Uh-oh. Okay.
Okay. All right, then, as soon as Scott pulls up the next presentation, we can go on with the budget update. Look at that.
All right.
Okay.
So, we'll start with a recap of your requested budget. Your requested budget included local funding request of $113.6 million, $2 million in fund balance request, $1 million with the use of our fund balance request, $159,000 use of charter school fund balance, $111.3 million in state funds, $2.7 million in federal funds, and $1.5 million in other funds, for a total recommended budget from the Board of Education to the county commissioners of $232.6 million, representing a $10.3 million increase or a $4.7 million increase over the adopted budget. So, this included, in summary, $7 million increase request in local funds and a $2 million request in local fund balance. The local funding request included four primary areas for the use of those $7 million, the negotiated agreement and the health insurance, contracted transportation increases to include increases that the commissioners could provide to the strikers and bus assistants, staffing enhancements, particularly in the areas that we've seen greatest need in special education staffing, nursing information technology and safety and security, as well as the information technology upgrades, and that's where we would use that $2 million request. Unfortunately, our request was not supported in totality. What we requested was $113.6 million in recurring funding. The county supported $109.9 million, which represents a funding difference of $3.6 million. On the local funding side for fund balance, we requested $2 million, and none of that was supported in the county's budget. So, in total of $115.6 million request that used in it to the county commissioners, the county supported $109.9 million, which represents a deficit of $5.7 million as compared to what our request was. So, with that, we went back to the drawing board, had cabinet and the whole conversations about what kinds of changes we needed to make to the budget to be able to fit within the confines of the $3.7 million that the county commissioners did support in the budget that they're taking to our public hearing next week. And that included removing all of the new positions that were submitted as means to support the system. That includes removing five special education teaching positions, five special education para educator positions, one secretary for special education, one school nurse, two registrars for the schools, one record mentor floating secretary, one pupil personnel worker, the removal of a half-time PE teacher, the removal of a .1 ABPA R teaching, removal of seven safety and security assistants, the removal of a transportation coordinator, the removal of one IT project coordinator, the removal of a computer support specialist, and the removal of a capital planning fiscal secretary. All of these items needed to be removed from the budget to the system balancing the budget to the funding levels that were being recommended by the county commissioners. However, as we're removing all of those positions, we did have a need to maintain some reclassifications to support those departments. So, the reclassifications that are being maintained in the budget as we're recommending to you include the chief of safety and security, a reclassification to chief of staff, a reclassification to safety and security coordinator, reclassification to a perimeter database administrator, the reclassification of the maintenance worker for positions, reclassification to a supervisor of operations, reclassification to a transportation analyst, the reclassification to a duty summer family service assistant, and I apologize by removing one position, and that was a reclassification to a transportation supervisor as a result of the removal of the transportation coordinator position. So, this leaves us with a modified request, which represents the county funding at $109.9 million, which is what the county commissioners are stating to the public hearing next week, which shows a $3.7 million increase in local funding. And as a side note, this is, does certainly exceed these efforts. But also, to balance the budget, we pulled out any items that would be deemed as non-recurring and increased our planned use of fund balance to $5.8 million, so that represents a $3.9 million increase in our planned use of fund balance over the current adopted budget. And it maintains all the other funding sources as previously identified, $159,000 for the charter school, $110,000, $1 million for the state funding, $2.7 million for federal, and $1.5 million for others. So, a total modified bottom-line budget of $231 million, representing a $9.5 million increase or a 4.3% increase. Now, if we were to back out the fund balance increases or the fund balances in here, it goes from $231.6 million down to $225.5 million, which represents an increase in our ongoing operating budget of 1.58%. These are the numbers that will be incorporated in the county commissioners' budget and aligns with their budget that they're planning on taking to the public hearing, which is scheduled for next Tuesday at 6:30. Are there any questions?
I just, I just want to make sure that everyone is completely clear, the money that we are using in the fund balance right now that's on that line item, that we are plowing into the fiscal 2021 budget, is cost savings that we have right now that we've already identified, correct?
It is correct.
All right. It is not money that we've had sitting there in an account for months on end, it is since we have quote-unquote shut down since March 12th and have seen expenses go all over the place in a variety of different categories. It is identified cost savings that we have sitting here right now at this point in time.
So, it is anticipated.
Correct.
So, given the way this year is going, given the way our healthcare is, totals are coming back, given the fact that we have shut down for an entire quarter of the year, we anticipate there being a fairly substantial fund balance when we get to the end of the school year.
Correct. And I just want everyone to understand that that's where this money is coming from. It is not that we had it stashed in an account, sitting somewhere, just waiting to pull out and use it the last minute.
Right. Officially, our fund balance is about $6 million.
This is anticipated, so there could be a change in it, that it could be, that we might not see all of this.
Right. I mean, we, I think that the, the funds identified, I think we're pretty much guaranteed that that's where we're going to end up.
Right.
And anybody who financially works through a budget should have a pretty good estimate of where they're going to end up.
I completely agree, and with, and with, with the history of Tammy and the finance department and their conservative approach in analyzing that, I'm completely comfortable with this number and loading this number into the budget when it comes that time. But I just, I just don't want any misconception that this money we had sitting around, this is all money that has been identified since the closing of the schools and anticipated changes in the way we operate, so.
And all of these funds are dedicated to non-recurring costs, which is extremely important. We will not move forward with any of those purchases, utilizing any of those funds until the fiscal year has closed, and those funds have absolutely been identified and confirmed.
Right, right, yeah. That, that's completely understood, just by the way that we operate on a non-pandemic basis. All right, Kathy?
And I, you know, I think we want to also stress to the public that while the commissioners are doing their public hearing next week, it will not look like their annual public hearing on the budget. They will be doing it remotely, there will not be individuals in the room with them. You won't be able to go in and stand before a microphone and make your case for why you feel that the funding you've requested is, is the needed amount. It will look very, very different, and while they have made options available to people to provide them with feedback on various budgets for which they have input, it's, it will not be the same as standing in front of them, looking them eye to eye. And I just want people to understand that, that they certainly are faced with challenges because their revenues that they have expected are in a degree of disarray and waiting to see. But I am, Mrs. McCourt always has the information we need, when we need it, and is, is ready ahead of time. So, I, like Mrs. Bailey, I'm, I'm comfortable with putting this forward. I, I, I just, I hope that we're able to go forward with this budget, so.
Jim, do you have anything?
The only thing I noticed, the delta in the state funds, I'm going by memory, I think it was 108 million, it's gone up to, it was a dollar of about a million and a half dollars.
Yes, it was, 1.4.
In terms of getting money out of the state.
Yes. Yeah, that's the number, that's what kind of threw us off at the beginning, because we, that's the line item where we received, what, $2 million less than what we were expecting from the state to begin with back in January.
Right. For all the conversations that there is this bank of state money coming, and the Kerwin money's coming, and we're going to have all this money, and everybody's going to get, teachers are going to start at $60,000 a year, and there, none of that has come to pass. What we, this, this year, we basically got $1 million, $1.5 million from the state, more than we had last year, and that's with additional, we added 100, 100 students. So, that was the, that was the very, that was the very first challenge. And so, and where, and where revenue's going to end up, nobody can predict that right now. So, I know that right now, everybody's saying there's going to be a huge deficit in, in all of the funding, and it's all going to go away, and that's why the government is plowing $2.2 trillion into the economy and billions of dollars into the state economy, which will mean millions of dollars into the local economy. So, people that are knee-jerking and then saying, well, we're going to, we're going to flat-fund schools, or we're going to do all of this, that's not necessarily the best fiscal thing to do when you're faced with a crisis. You can look historically back to the Depression, and that's what we did, and some of the larger mistakes in the 2008 recession, this, this scurry to pull back things that should be the most supported, like individuals and homeowners and unemployment insurance, and those are all things that we really need to be leaning into. And education is obviously, if it hasn't become incredibly apparent to, to at least half of this county, schools are really important on a day-to-day living-your-life existence here in St. Mary's County. The county relies on the school system being able to provide this service, just like it relies on our corrections officers, our sworn officers, and our county government employees. That's why we have asked for and built into this budget support for the negotiated agreement, which is one step and a 1% cola for all employees. And that, of course, trails every other employee in this county.
And people also need to understand that even if this pandemic had not happened, that we would not be receiving additional Kerwin money next year beyond what we've received this year. Because even if the governor passed or signed the legislation today, we would not see additional revenues of any substance at all for next year. Those revenues, if they indeed materialize, won't kick in until at least FY 2022. And monies for us could be a year even beyond that. So, let's, you know.
All right. Mary, do you have anything?
No, I want to thank Ms. McCourt for doing a good job, and her estimate of the fund balance seems very accurate. And unfortunately, we were able to get these additional funds based on savings that we had, but we will use them effectively.
Okay. All right, and I think Nagina dropped off.
She might be doing her.
Oh, there you are. Do you have anything? Do you have any comments, Nagina?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone have anything else?
No.
All right, as of right now, our next meeting is scheduled to be an evening meeting on April 29th, but stay tuned in case the time changes. We will make that decision, and obviously, there will be a press release coming out about that. And with that, we are adjourned.